Good morning. We'll call this meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors to order. If you'll please rise for invocation from Supervisor Brotherton and the Pledge of Allegiance from Supervisor Moss.
Oh heavenly Father, we gather here again today. Doing your business and your will, give us the wisdom, oh Lord, to lead our people and be transparent and honest, oh Lord, in all of our dealings. Be with us today. Throughout this meeting, we ask for your wisdom in all things, and we'll give you the praise. Amen.
Please join with me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Prince, if you'll verify that Supervisor Johnson is on the line, please.
Supervisor Johnson, are you on the line?
I'm here.
Welcome to the meeting, Buster.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman Watson, I can't hear him hardly at all.
Pardon me?
I can't hear him.
Buster, can you speak more clearly?
I'll try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, kind of motion to go into executive session being held on April 1st, 2013, at 9:00 AM for discussion and consultation with legal counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, before we get into the meeting this morning, I'd like to have a small presentation from our director from the Health Department, Patty Mead, concerning the tobacco cessation and some students.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, Supervisor Brotherton, Supervisor Moss, and Supervisor Johnson on the phone. I am pleased and proud to introduce to you today our Kick Butt kids from the Kingman of Mojave County, actually, and Annie Meredith is the adult coordinator, Brianna Brown is the Kick Butt president, and Amanda Spivey is the Kick Butt vice president. And they're going to tell you about a special project they'd like to do here at the County Board of Supervisors building.
Thank you, Ms. Mead.
Hi, thank you. Good morning, Chairman Watson and board. Thank you again Supervisor Brotherton for the opportunity to present today. We're here representing the Kingman Youth Coalition beating up teen tobacco. I'm Brianna Brown, the president of Kick Butt, and this is Amanda Spivey, the vice president. Basically, we would like to ask permission to use the main lobby of the Mojave County Administration Building for our Kick Butts Day event on Wednesday, March 20th, from 11:30 AM to 1:30 PM. This is a national event that we will be doing at the same time as 20 other youth tobacco coalitions across all of Arizona. We normally host this event at our school, but we thought that it would be a great idea to bring it to our community and give them an opportunity to be a part of it. This event consists of three parts, a pledge wall where people pledge to become tobacco-free slash stay tobacco-free, an impact statement where the youth will randomly drop every 30 minutes to signify the people that are dying from a tobacco-related illness, and a number campaign which visually represents the amount of people that die every 15 minutes from a tobacco-related illness. We will be using four to five bundles of 15 balloons to show this. Along with permission to hold our event here, we would also like to invite you to attend. Here's a picture of what the pledge wall and balloon bundles will look like. And so those are the balloons. And then here are a couple pictures of our past Kick Butts Day events that we have received national recognition for.
There you go.
There you go.
Good.
And thank you so much for your time and consideration in this matter, and have a wonderful day.
And thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, committee or legislative reports? Committee or legislative reports? Do we have any reports? There are being done, we'll go to the county manager's report.
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll have the approval of the January 2nd, 2013 Board of Supervisors minutes.
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, now we have the call to the public. Those wishing to address the board at the call to the public regarding matters not on the agenda have, I'm sure you've already filled out and submitted to the clerk. This request to speak is located at the front. Action taken as a result of the comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff for placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. Person signed up this morning for call to the public is Deborah DeBrant. If you'll please come up. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Deborah DeGrant, PO Box 721, Yucca, Arizona. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to address some issues. I live in the Yucca Fire District. The Yucca Fire District has several felons, convicted felons on the force. Another individual was just arrested on charges, hasn't been tried yet. We've been trying for over two years to get some form of a professionally-trained fire force where we're at, to no avail. No W-2s or 1099s have ever been issued. Thousands and thousands of dollars in payroll have gone out. No background checks are being done. According to the state of Arizona, background checks are supposed to be done, none are being done. We've tried everything, from the governor on down, trying to get some help. I'm hoping now with the Board of five supervisors, maybe someone can help us out and at least make them, you know, do what the county needs to do. Desert Hills Fire Department has to cover our calls due to mutual aid. You know, we're severely impacting their budget, but yet we have a brand-new $700,000 building, but yet do not have any trained professional firefighters with life-saving capabilities. We do have one EMT, and we do have three other individuals that are going to EMT school right now. One has already been to EMT school before, but just didn't get certified. So any help that we could get on this, we would sincerely appreciate. Any response would be greatly appreciated.
And thank you. We were reserved, Dr. Staff, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Excuse me?
Ma'am, Deborah, we have a question.
Have you voiced your concerns to the fire board?
Oh, yeah.
And to what?
They're, they say that they're grandfathered in, they don't have to do background checks, and they say that the county attorney has told them that they don't need to do background checks. They've said that the county attorney doesn't have a problem with them not issuing 1099s and W-2s, several things like that. We're referring to Bill Ekstrom. We've also brought it to Robert, Bob Taylor, and they're establishing a relationship with the fire department, so to no avail there either. Matt Smith has been notified. Everyone was basically notified with a large packet two years ago, ringing several of these concerns with documentation to prove them, and still to this date, nothing's been done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person would like to speak to call to the public is Lottie Bentley.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name, my name is Lottie Banker, and I represent Halt Help Animals Lives Today. I do appreciate your approval of our kennel permit. However, I would like to indicate that, I would like to give you some copies of our last year's activities, and it will indicate to you that we have saved over 374 animals from the public turned in, as well as from the pound. And if you equate the cost, what it does, to euthanize an animal, you might realize that it's close to $150. I would like to point out that we have saved the county more than $55,000, and I will give you some copies of our report. In our last 10, 12 years of existence, we have saved and transported more than 5,500 animals out of Mojave County, including adoptions. So, we are trying to do our best, and I would beg you to reconsider to extend the permit from two years to three years, as it was granted for the lover pass. And if I may, I can hand you over some copies, and all our records are documented and can be at your perusal at any time, as well as our tax returns. And as you know, we're not funded a penny by anyone. We relied solely on memberships and contributions. I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Ms. Baker.
May I hand that to you?
Certainly, come on up. Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. Any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? Supervisor Angus, item 62. Supervisor Brotherton?
I don't think so.
Supervisor Moss?
None.
Supervisor Johnson?
None for me, sir.
Thank you, sir. And item number 23 for mine. Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda with, with the exceptions of item 23 and item 62.
I move to approve the consent agenda, accepting items 23 and 62.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. We'll go to item number 23, and I just have a question on that. Motion for discussion?
I move for discussion.
I second.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. My question is, seems like a pretty exorbitant amount on the monthly figure for $600, and my question to, I would suppose it would be the, the amount of area in which we're putting this contract for. $600 a month seems like an awful lot of money. Mr. Latowski, if you could answer that, please.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, members of the board. The service, the monthly service encompasses a three-acre area.
Three acres.
Across the cemetery area that's set aside for the county's indigent cemetery, and this monthly service would be comprised of weed control, pruning, mowing, and fertilization across that entire three-acre area. So it does represent a rather fair value considering the area covered.
Okay, satisfies me now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve item amendment to number eight, contract number 08 PS-12 to JOC Landscaping Services.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item 62.
I make a motion to discuss.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, let's discuss.
Okay, the reason I asked that this be pulled from the consent agenda is because I wanted to talk about it. It is, the motion reads, sitting as the Board of Directors of Mojave County Library District, approve a ward or contract number 12 PS-22, Kingman Library Needs Assessment to HBM Architects out of Cleveland, Ohio, to provide professional architectural and engineering services for the Kingman Library Needs Assessment for a total contract amount of $65,860. Now, being I'm somewhat new to this whole process, you know, I sort of asked around about what exactly a needs assessment is, and how I sort of understand it is that we bring in the company, and we pay them, and they tell us we need a new library, or something like that. And I just wanted some time to go over, you know, we just recently built a new library in Bullhead City, so I do have some information, and Ms. Ivonne Orr was kind enough to get me that information this morning. So I would like to just table this for a month, so I can do some research. There is some instability in the library district right now, and I think that it would be more suited for another, next month, when we have more information.
Okay. I would concur with Ms., or Supervisor Angus's comments. We should wait till things are a little more stable before we move on that.
Agreed.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion?
All right, I make a motion to table item 62 to award this contract for the library needs assessment until our April meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience wishing to discuss this item? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried to table the item till the next meeting. Moving on to public hearing, item number 68, discussion possible action, approve the placement of a lien for dangerous building, abatement and the amount of $3,923.96 in accordance with Section 110 of the International Property Maintenance Code, tract 1103, New Kingman Edition. Nicholas Hunt, would you wish to speak to this item?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, supervisors. In the last board meeting, the board set a date for the public hearing, which is today. This is a, this was a dangerous building that we have a abatement action committee where we work with the county attorney's office and other enforcement agencies within the county, and we identified it, a building official identified it as a dangerous building, and as a result, we demolished it and reestablished the property, cleaned up the property. The costs add up to $3,923, and we're asking the board to approve to place a lien on that property for that amount.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing on item number 68.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Those, anyone wishing to discuss this item? Anyone in the audience? Please, come forward. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Don Williams, and I live at 2540 East Last. I've put a lien against, there's two properties there on that lot, there's two lots, and I have a tax lien against one of them. I was not notified about anything. I don't know how this is going to affect my lot. I tried to look up the parcel number that you have on the public notice out front of the property, and it doesn't coincide with what they have here, with my name on it, with the tax lien. The parcel number that was on the sign was 324212520. They told me that was one too many numbers, and I did get, I did ask the people over here at the counter about the parcel numbers, and they don't coincide with this number to start with. The parcel number that was on the public notice.
Okay.
I wanted to know how this would affect me. I feel that $3,900 was quite a bit of, is too much for the work that they did. There was three people over there, it took them two days, they did haul it off, they could have came in with a truck and hooked up to the trailer to have it removed. So, you know, I mean, there's no itemization about how, why it costs so much, and I wanted to know how it would affect me having a tax lien on the property.
Mr. Ekstrom, could you explain what his position would be?
Mr. Chairman, board members, I can't really give legal advice to him about what he should or shouldn't do. Ordinarily, our liens are well researched, and we go to bid to find somebody to take the nuisance away, and so we can't really comment on whether or not we spent too much or too little, that's what it cost us.
Right, I understand that.
Finally, I, I think what he ought to do is talk to the people at the county, just to make certain that, that our lien is not in a different lot than his tax lien, and I think that makes sense. We'll talk to him about it. If the board approves the lien and we look at it and decide that it is not for some reason legitimate, well certainly we wouldn't, we wouldn't file it, we'd let you know that, but...
Would it be your recommendation then, this morning, then, to table this item for, for one month, then for clarification?
It may be a good idea, I think, just to let him have his, have his say.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor, but it appears that we need clarification. Would you care to withdraw your, your motion?
Oh, okay, yes, I withdraw my motion to approve and make a new motion to table this item for a month for clarification.
Second.
Okay, a second to remove your second, and then second, the new motion.
Correct.
Correct, okay, all right. Any further questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carry. This item will be tabled until the next month for clarification.
What date would that be, sir?
Our next meeting is April, April 1st at 9:30 AM.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, close the public hearings into our regular agenda. Item number 69, discussion possible action relating to the approval of amending contract number 11-PO3 for the medical examiner services with Dr. Rexanne Worrell of Lake Havasu City.
Motion to discuss.
Motion for discussion?
Second.
Second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion to discuss. Good morning.
Good morning.
Questions?
Yeah, you know, I know you were instructed, we instructed staff at our last meeting to go and speak with Dr. Worrell and see what it would take, and from what I read, everything that, and more, that I understood, I'm sorry, that I understood has been granted, so I just want a little further clarification of how you came up with all of this. Okay. Supervisor Angus and members of the board, just a little background of the medical examiner contract. Dr. Worrell started as a medical examiner in 2007, and on 2011, her contract came up for renewal, and we gave her a two-year contract with one year renewable after that. On February 4, the Board of Supervisor gave us the instruction to talk to her and come back with contract changes that may be acceptable to the medical examiner to be proposed and for the board to take action on. Now, a review of the current contract of Dr. Worrell indicates, and I've worked with procurement staff, Annie and Tony Burgett, to look at how we bided the contract initially. And with that discussion, we realized that any contract we give to Dr. Worrell is actually an all-inclusive contract, okay? So with that, staff went, had some discussions with Dr. Worrell. We also got several information outside, OMB provided several options to us, and including the option that was presented to you in the last meeting. And we realized that we're kind of limited a little bit on what we can do with that contract. If it is an all-inclusive contract, then we want to make sure that if we talk about contract changes to her contract, that it has to be, again, all-inclusive. It can't be she provides some and the county provides some. So with that in mind, OMB provided information to us, and part of the information is what does it cost the county to bring the medical examiner services in house? What, they also did some checking and research on what are medical examiners paid in other counties. They also did a research on how the medical examiner is set up in different counties. Although we had those different options, the direction given to us in the last meeting is come back with some changes to the contract to see if we can meet some of them. And of course, the option is always there, if we cannot meet any of those, you can instruct us to go out and bid on the contract. But based on the instruction given to us, the following were proposed changes that were acceptable to Dr. Worrell, and also legally what we could provide within the scope of the current contract as how it was bided originally. One, we will propose a change that rather than a yearly contract that we're going to have with her, with the changes we're going to make, we're going to tie her to a two-year contract right now, which commences on July 1st, 2013, and ends on June 30, 2015. So that's a change. Initially, it was a year-to-year contract, after the two years, now we're going to tie her because of the proposed changes we're presenting to you. Second, if you remember, Dr. Worrell indicated she needed some extra funds to meet up her expenditures, to be able to hire a part-time staff, a physician to help her out. Now, rather than exchanging that cost with other costs, she proposed then an increased monthly contract of $5,000, which means that yearly it's going to be a $6,000 annual increase to her current contract. By the way, her current contract right now is $560,600 annually, okay? So that's another $60,000 that's going to be increased in her contract. In the last negotiation, she wanted, she wanted some help from the county for the air conditioning and the vehicles. Now, although we realized that we could have helped her on that, because of the contract is tied to all-inclusiveness of her contract, we decided to propose that any, any additional expenditure that she would have for her building and need for vehicle, it has to be built in in her contract, and she has to be responsible for that and not the county being responsible. With that in mind, we then discussed the possibility of giving her a lump sum increase in her contract by July 5th, and the contract will be one, not to exceed, now this is only one year, okay, the first year, not to exceed $36,000, and for her to get a contract, to get whatever arrangement she could have with her landlord to improve her building conditions, and it could be the air conditioning and so on. And the other one is that rather than giving her the vehicles, which would give us a total outlay of $115,000 to purchase the vehicle, and $60,000 for monthly maintenance, we propose that we give her $75,000 to buy her vehicles. It's her, it's a one-time shot, and, you know, that's what we're going to give her. With those one-time lump sum payments that we're proposing, we're tying her to a two-year contract with the caveat that if she does not fulfill her two-year contract, that she will reimburse the county proportionately for the lump sum that we have given her. So that is how we have come up with those changes, we're presenting that to you, if there's anything you wish to discuss in any of those, and of course, the option... in any of those, and of course, the option is always, one, if you don't like any of those options, we can go out to bid and get other bidders to come in, or, two, we can look at bringing the medical examiner in-house. So those are the options, but right now, those are the provisions of the contract that we would like to present to you as instructed by the board in the last meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Exum.
Yeah, I have a question. The vehicles, the one-time seventy-five thousand, she owns them after that?
Yes, yes. She would own it-
After two years? I mean, she just takes them with her when she leaves?
Yes, but she, uh, okay, we, we decided to do that rather than buying the vehicles for her, you know? Uh, if we buy the vehicles, we were required to purchase the vehicles for a hundred and fifteen thousand. She was asking us to maintain, operate, and provide fuel at sixty thousand annually, and she had the impression she was not gonna lease those vehicles from us. So with those provisions, we said, we'll give you a lump sum seventy-five thousand, increase in your contract. You buy your vehicles, you repair your existing vehicles, whatever you do with that, you know, that's what we're gonna give you. The county is out in maintenance and providing fuel and maintenance for those, for those vehicles. Now, if she decides to withdraw after one year, then she will reimburse us proportionately, uh, what we've expended for the lump sum we've given her. I think the idea is increasing her contract to be able to, for her to operate as a medical examiner, and, um, but we are not responsible to doing it for her, and that she should do it. We also looked at, you know, comparison. If we provide this for her contract, how would that compare with the cost of other counties? And we've, we've, when we did the math, even with those increases we're gonna provide to her, it would still be below what it would cost us to bring the medical examiner services in-house, and also comparatively for the county of our size, it would be either comparable or even lower than what other counties are spending right now.
Okay, well, just one more small question.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we're gonna be improving a building that's not our own.
Yes.
Uh, i- i- if the decision's made after two years to leave that building, does that have any value, the, that, that air conditioning? Is it, is it something that can be taken? Does it, does, will we recoup any of it?
Okay. The, the way we're presenting the contract is that we're gonna give her the money to do it. It's actually a, a, an agreement between her and the landlord. We're not, the county is not improving the building because we, actually legally, we couldn't. Uh, we don't have a lease. We're not even the lessy to the building. Dr. Worrell is the lessy, so whatever she would negotiate with the landlord when she leaves after two years, it's gonna be hers. That way, the county is not liable to maintaining and anything that would improve the building. It's between the landlord and the lessy, and the county is not at all a part of the lease agreement at this time. It's cleaner that way, I think, the way we presented it.
Any further questions for Mr. Exum?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Exum, do we have a recommendation from O M B or from staff on what our plans for the future should be? I mean, this is just a Band-Aid. This is a, it's, at the most, a two-year fix. What direction is the staff, uh, saying we should be going in? Should we be looking at building a building and going out and hiring our own person?
Uh, Supervisor Johnson and members of the board, uh, O M B did a study on what it takes to bring the medical services in-house, which includes, uh, a morgue, either leasing or procuring. Um, they have recommendations. Uh, we could, and, and we understand, this is just a two-year contract with Dr. Worrell. We may still be in the same position after two years. So it would buy us two years to make plans on what we're gonna do in the next two years. Yes, O M B has provided us those information, and if you wish, we could present that to the board in another meeting, uh, planning for what it's gonna take us two years from now to either bring the medical services in-house, to buy our own morgue, lease our own morgue, and so on. But right now, because the contract is July first, you know, either we, we, we get some options that we're gonna do July first with a thing in mind that hopefully staff will be looking at what we're gonna do after two years. We could provide that information. Um, uh, Mr. Hendrix, we could provide that information to the board because O M B has those costs that they have actually conducted a research on what it takes to bring the services in-house.
Also, Mr. Exum, I didn't hear any, uh, remarks about how much income was generated by the, uh, signing of death certificates by the, uh, our coroner now. Do we have those figures?
Um, Bill, uh, Mike, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have those figures.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick.
I, I guess my question then would be, if somebody is using our authority to sign death certificates and collecting funds, that we have no account for it? That doesn't seem like a, a really good move on our part.
Um, what, what I'd like to do is being able to bring back that information back to the board, if that's okay, Mr. Johnson?
Do I have a choice? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
If I can add, I did request the numbers for bringing in-house a month or so back, and by memory only, I believe it was O M B did provide them to me, and it was roughly nine hundred thousand dollars. So this is still, assuming the math holds up. I'm, I'm not vouching for anyone's math because mine's horrible. This is still a fairly cost-effective deal for the county.
Yes, it is.
Yes. Supervisor Watson, uh, that's correct. We do have, uh, it's close to nine hundred thousand is the estimate that O M B has provided to bring the services in-house to the county. So we can provide that information to all of you, so that we could use that as a base information to plan on what to do two years from now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Exum?
Dr. Worrell is also here, if you have any question of her.
Yes, she's right behind you.
Oh, sorry.
Dr. Worrell, would you like to?
And also Jean, who did the O M B study.
Any questions for Dr. Royal?
Thank you, County Supervisors. Um, just to address Mr. Johnson's question, there is no money coming into my office currently for doing the death, signing the death certificates that I should not be signing. Um, he suggested at some point that perhaps, uh, 'cause I've tried that. I thought that was a brilliant idea to, if I'm signing a death certificate that I really shouldn't, then the doctor that should, that doesn't want to, that the state statute says then I have to, should pay for that service. So I tried to bill them, and, oh my gosh, was that disastrous. So I, I've been signing them to help the families. Now, Mr. Johnson suggested that the county could, um, or somebody suggested the county could create a fee for that, and we could bill for that. And if we started collecting funds for work that I'm doing that should be done by another physician, I have no trouble with collecting that money and sending it to the county. I mean, 'cause I'm doing the job, and if you can make a county, um, fee for that, then by all means, you should. But I'm not collecting any money. I probably do ten or fifteen a week. Um, I feel that, there's definitely some, uh, penalty there that should be for these physicians that are just saying they don't feel comfortable in signing the death certificate, and they dump it on me. And somebody has to help these poor families get a death certificate, so I've just been doing it. Um, and of course, the state statute said if the doctor's unavailable, and they all say they're just unavailable, conveniently. Uh, so that clarifies that, but as long as Supervisor Johnson knows that right now, there's no money coming in for that whatsoever.
Thank you, Doctor.
Any other questions regarding?
Have any other questions?
For me?
Thank you, Dr. Royal.
Thank you.
I think you're doing an exemplary job. It's not a, an easy one, and I think staff did a remarkable job in putting this entire package together, and also making sure that our liability is, is under control. Chair would entertain a motion?
I move that we approve item sixty-nine of the agenda, together with directing staff to two or three meetings down from now, bringing back the issue of potential fee schedule to charge physicians who fail to sign their patients' death certificates.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do you have a clear? Thank you. Any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would have would be that, uh, we bring that fee schedule back, uh, before the budget, so it could include in the budget if, uh, the board decides to do that.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carry. Item number seventy, discussion, possible action regarding the approval of number one, the administrative procedure, two-dash-four on unclassified employees and positions, and number two, the proposed organizational chart. Motion for discussion?
I move for discussion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, let's discuss.
I, may I start, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Um, I, uh, looked over the, um, proposed policy, and I have no problem with it. I still believe when it comes to the organizational chart that risk management in O M B should be direct reports to the board. Um, we need, if the purpose of O M B is to be a second set of eyes on finances and risk management is to be a protector of the county from legal risks and liability, um, I believe having an alternate chain of command where they don't report to the same person is advisable. Otherwise, they're not truly independent. And so I really do believe that O M B and risk management should be reporting to the board, and that we should essentially swap the lines on the chart, on color chart, where it'd be direct reporting to the Board of Supervisors and indirect reporting to the county administrator as to those two departments. And that's, that's what I have to say on the issue.
Thank you, Supervisor Watson. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson.
I'm having a hard time on, uh, looking at the, we have the dotted lines and the solid lines. Does this mean that we are now gonna be hiring and firing the executive secretary and the assistant to the county administrator?
I believe that would be a correct assumption.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that's incorrect. The-
Incorrect?
The dotted lines, um, show that they're indirect reporting to the board. The only two direct reports to the board currently are the clerk of the board and the county administrator under the current proposal. Um, I did just suggest that we move risk management in O M B to being solid lines to us and dotted lines to the county administrator, but under the current proposal, the executive se- secretary and the assistant to the county administrator direct report to the county administrator. I think that's my, that my reading of the chart.
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hendrick, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm still a little confused then. Are we, so basically, we're the same as we always were. We just have this dotted line here for some reason, but right now, the, the clerk and the administrator report to the board, and then those are the only two people that we can, that we have direct control over of hiring or firing, those two.
Yes, as, as proposed, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson, uh, the organizational chart, what, uh, as stated, what those lines mean, the solid line is a, um, authority line, the dash line is communication line, which illustrates that the Board of Supervisors has the authority to communicate with the departments and the divisions. The policy does present that the board has the authority to, uh, um, hire, uh, fire, uh, or discipline department heads or actually at-will employees, unclassified employees, without, uh, concurrence from the county administrator. So, um, to answer your question, the board would have authority over those types of activities regardless of, uh, the feelings or the expressed concerns or, or the concurrence of the county administrator.
Does that answer your question, Supervisor Johnson?
I, I believe so. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, in concurrence with our change in the policy, and the proposed, proposal is on the, um, organizational chart, uh, I'll make a, a motion at this point in time to go ahead and approve the administrative procedure, two-dash-four, unclassified employees, positions, and number two, the proposed organizational chart without alteration. Okay, it appears that we have, do we have a, we don't have a second on that. So the Chair would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve, um, the, let me get the language right, the administrative procedure two-point-four, unclassified employee positions, and that we further approve the proposed organizational chart with the exception that O M B and risk management would be direct reports to the Board of Supervisors and indirect reporting to the county administrator.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. We have three. Approve, two, nay. Item seventy-one, discussion, possible action regarding the continued employment of Daniel Crowe, Mojave County Library Director. We have two asterisks on item seventy-one, in which we may go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mrs. Crowe has requested that any discussion of her employment other than salary negotiations be done in the open public meeting. So at this op, at this time, we have an opportunity, an opportunity among the board to discuss this issue. It's not a due process hearing or anything formal like that, but the board can pretty much set its own parameters.
Thank you, Mr. Exum. We have, under item seventy-one, Ms. Danielle Crowe would like, wishing to speak to this item. Ms. Crowe?
Good morning, Chairman Watson and members of the board. I'm going to read a letter to you that you will be receiving shortly. It consists of fair, uh, two very short paragraphs, and I think I'll, I'll make my message clear to the members of the audience. "It is unfortunate that the Mojave County Board of Supervisors appears poised to terminate my employment today because of allegations about me. It is a sad commentary that the board is listening to several employees and former disgruntled employee Kathy McGeehee, who was documented as placing a dead scorpion in my inbox at work. When confronted with the video, Ms. McGeehee laughed and admitted it. Since the board never asked me about the incident or any of the other al, baseless allegations, I will tell you that security cameras were placed in the technical services and administrative building three years ago because a former staff person was stealing toilet paper, DVDs, and supplies. All you need to do is ask to see the purchase orders for those cameras. It is incredibly sad that the Mojave County Board of Supervisors does not support senior management and department heads when they are attacked by unfounded allegations, rumor, and gossip. The board listens and acts unwavering opinions based upon such rumors, hearsay, and innuendos from staff rather than researching the facts. One of your campaign promises was transparency in government. Yet you have demonstrated a willingness to not be transparent, but rather to convene backroom star chamber-like proceedings to solidify your opinions without ever really investigating the underlying basis for those opinions or the impact of your decisions on your loyal employees or your citizenry. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Crowe.
Thank you. Did you give this original to Chairman Watson? I didn't get one.
I didn't get one either, but that's okay. Oh, thank you, Peggy.
Motion for discussion.
I move for discussion.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Mr. Hendricks?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, it, recently, it's become evident to me that Danielle Crowe's performance and management style has alienated her employees, and has not fostered the positive work environment I believe is essential for Mojave County. And therefore, for that reason, I'm recommending Mrs. Crowe's at-will employment- And therefore, for that reason, I'm recommending Mrs. Crowell's at-will employment be terminated effective today at five o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
I'll start then, if I may.
Supervisor Watts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll tell you that when I addressed, or when I prepared for this item seventy-one about Danielle Crowell, I hadn't made up my mind what to do, but Ms. Crowell, your comments, they convinced me to go against you. I mean, if that's how you interact with people, I mean, you essentially attacked us, and I'm like, trying to weigh the pros and cons of what to do, and I'm accused of engaging in star chamber-like activities. I haven't talked to anybody in your library district, Mrs. Crowell. I wanted to hear what you had to say, and instead, you throw a rock at me. I mean, that's not, if you're doing that to me, who's allegedly your supervisor, what are you doing to your employees? I mean, that's my only observation.
Thank you Supervisor Watts. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, sir. The only thing I've seen so far is, was the backup that we received from Mr. Hendricks on, which is basically, he said, she said, that's all we've received so far? Is that right?
Let me have Mr. Hendricks address that.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, Ms. Crowell is an at-will employee, and I'm recommending that for the best interest of Mojave County, that her employment be terminated.
Isn't that supposed to answer my question?
I think that's the answer you just got.
Yeah, well, I guess that brings up another one, but I'll save that for another agenda item then. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion.
I move that we terminate the employment of Daniel Crowell, Mojave County Library Director.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to terminate Ms. Danielle Crowell as the County Library Director. Anyone wishing to speak at this time on this issue? Anyone wishing to speak on this issue? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
We have one nay. Thank you. Item number seventy-two, discussion, possible action regarding the sitting as the Board of Directors of Mojave County Flood Control District. Approve the proposed allocation formula and procedure for the annual distribution of the portion of Mojave County Flood Control District tax revenues to the incorporated cities of Mojave County. Motion for discussion?
I move for discussion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. We have a motion for discussion. Mr. Cassens, would you like to?
Thank you Chairman Watson and Flood Control District Directors. My name is Charlie Cassens, I'm the City Manager for Lake Havasu City, and I'm confident that I speak for my fellow city managers in Mojave County when I express support for the recommended changes to the distribution formula for flood control funds. Special thanks to Mike Hendricks and Nick Haunt for working with us as a team to come up with what we believe is a far more equitable formula, and one that corrects an imbalance in flood control funding that has evolved over the last couple of decades. We support the passage of this item, and we thank you for the opportunity to work with your staff on this important matter.
Thank you, Mr. Cassens. Any questions for Mr. Cassens? Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Cassens. I believe he, Mr. Cassens said exactly what I was going to say, but from the other side of the podium. This dovetails with an agenda item last month, where we returned some money, well, we gave some extra money back to the cities that we, I felt, we felt that had been taken away from them unfairly, and I had been told from a Bullhead City City Manager that there had never been an avenue of discussion between the city and the county to come up with an equitable formula, and that the cities had never even been aware what the formula was, and just on face value, that alone, it had to be very difficult to make budgets based on that. And it was also sort of part of the process of obtaining that money became a bit of a sticking point. So, I want to thank staff and the city managers of the cities who came together, worked together for the first time apparently ever, to come up with this formula that everyone appears to be very happy with, and so I thank everyone involved.
Very good. Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion.
I actually have a question.
Certainly.
This is for Mr. Hendricks or Mr. Exum, I'm not really sure. The proposed IGAs, it was like the draft IGA that was included in our backup material, is that on a per-year basis, or is that on a per-project basis? I really wasn't clear when I was looking through that.
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Moss, that IGA is on a per-year basis.
Okay. That answers my question.
Is that all your questions?
That was it. I ask the hard ones, don't I?
Well, then, I move to accept item number seventy-two, sitting as Board of Directors of Mojave County Flood Control District. We approve the proposed allocation formula and procedure for the annual distribution of a portion of the Mojave County Flood Control District tax revenues to the incorporated cities of Mojave County.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Any further questions? Mr. Robinson, I didn't see you had signed up to any of the items here, on item seventy-two, but you wish to speak, is that correct?
Thank you Chairman Watson, and yes, I do.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Stephen Robinson, thirty-four, thirty-five North Bowie Road, Golden Valley, Arizona, and I like the fact that there is a specific formula, and I think that that's very good. My concern was only with this percentage of eighty percent, forgive me, Mr. Cassens, and that reason being is twofold. Right now, I know of three specific projects surrounding the cities that were county projects. Currently, there's Mockingbird Wash in Lake Havasu, and then there's other projects in the county that have direct, very direct benefit to the cities, and I believe that perhaps those projects should either be joint projects with the cities, because they have a direct impact, or that we adjust this formula to based upon the fact that so much of the work is done very close to the cities. And then, secondly, my thought is, because the residents of the cities do use the roads and use the rest of the county, that maybe this formula might be just a hairbit high, because that's where the vast majority of the revenues come in, is from the cities, and so maybe, based upon those two facts, one, that the county projects are so vital to the cities, and then the county general work is also beneficial to the residents of the city. That's my only comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your expert comment, Mr. Robinson. Any further discussion?
I think.
Yes, sir. Please do.
I live at two-six-five-seven-two North Rose, Meadview, Arizona, and I'd just like to second what Mr. Robinson said, and furthermore, I'd just like to ask, what is the formula? I saw the item in the agenda, but I haven't seen any actual formulas, so I'd like to get that clarification.
Mr. Hendricks, would you like to briefly explain the formula?
Chairman Supervisors, I'll try to do it off the top of my head. Basically, the amount of taxes that are collected for the Flood Control District. In the old formula, originally, we collected twenty-five cent per hundred dollars as assessed valuation, and that was distributed about, I believe, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars was split between the cities based on assessed valuation, and the second twenty-five cent was split between the cities and the county based on assessed valuation. So, that created the inequity. What we're proposing to do, and what we've met with the cities, and they've agreed to move forward with, is that the county collects the total amount of flood control district tax, and then the county assesses a special district assessment, which amounts to roughly half a million dollars. That's for the counties to collect the tax and to distribute the monies. From that formula, eighty percent of the funds that are collected within the cities will return to the cities, and the remainder would go to the counties.
Okay, in exact, equal proportions to each city?
The city's funds are going to be distributed based on their prorated share of assessed valuation.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number seventy-three, discussion, possible action regarding the approval of the revision of the Mojave County Application for Appointment to Boards or Commissions, and to eliminate the requirement to conduct a credit check.
Motion to discuss?
Motion?
Second.
Second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried to discuss.
Okay, I put this on here, we, for those who don't know, we have a bunch of boards and commissions in Mojave County, and each supervisor is responsible for asking people from their district to serve as volunteers on these boards and commissions, and I'm going to tell you, I probably speak on behalf of some of our new ones, that it's not an easy task. We're asking people to volunteer their time unpaid, mostly unreimbursed. Some of them meet on a monthly, some meet quarterly, but they meet, and they're volunteering. And one of the items on the application, which is a very large application, I might add, is it's a background check and a credit check. And a background check, I think we all understand, I believe that employees have to take a background check when they come to work, but I don't believe that employees do a credit check. And several of the people, and there were several of the people I had asked, asked me, why do they need a credit check? And I asked staff, and no one actually could come up with a good enough reason for me, unless they're handling money, and as far as I know, none of these board and commissions handle money. So, it just seems like an unnecessary item. A couple of people I wanted backed out because of it, so I am asking just to take that out of the application.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Certainly. Supervisor Moss.
Speaking for myself and my own interactions with clients in the past, it's my understanding, dealing with these credit reporting agencies, that the fact their credit check is done itself drives down your credit rating. So, the more credit checks you get in any given period of time, the lower your rating is, and that's why I don't let anyone run credit checks on me. I mean, I wouldn't do it, just because I want to protect my eight-hundred.
Thank you. Any further comment? Discussion? Chair would entertain a motion.
Okay, make motion to approve the revision of the Mojave County Application for Appointments to Boards or Commissions, and to eliminate the requirement to conduct a credit check.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number seventy-four, approve the appointment of Marilyn Simmons to the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Library District, representing District Two, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. I'll second your motion to approve. Any further discussion?
Sorry, I faded there for a moment.
Pardon me?
Never mind.
Okay, there being no discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item seventy-five, discussion, possible action, approve the appointment of Linda Stevenson to the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Library District, representing District Two, term to expire March third, two thousand and fifteen.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number seventy-six, discussion, possible action regarding supporting House Bill twenty-six forty-eight, Police Functions Revocation and Officer Misconduct Bill. Motion for discussion?
Motion to discuss?
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried for discussion. We have, in the audience to speak to item number seventy-six, is Joseph Alred, Mayor of the City of Colorado City. Is Joseph available?
If you will state your name and address, please. Joseph Alred, Mayor of Colorado City, twenty-five South Central, Colorado City, Arizona.
Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you very much Supervisor Watson and members of the Board. In regards to House Bill twenty-six forty-eight, which is in the Arizona House at this time, which would, in effect, that bill would remove the policeman, police authority of Colorado City, or attempt to do so, and the town of Colorado City is determined to serve all citizens on an impartial and equal basis, contrary to sensationalized media reports, and there is already in place an effective process to deal with police officer misconduct through Arizona Post, and it works, that process works. And Colorado City officers have been and will continue to be ready and willing to work with Mojave County officers in helping to provide a safe community. House Bill twenty-six forty-eight greatly inhibits freedom of local government. In addition to being harmful to Colorado City, any small town would be threatened with losing its law enforcement authority if there is decertification by even as small as one or two individual officers. So, we encourage you strongly to not support House Bill twenty-six forty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Alred. Next person signed up to speak to this item is David Darger. Thank you, Mr. Darger.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can I, Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry, I, would you come back here? I'd like to ask you a question. Thank you.
Thank you.
How many police do you have at the Colorado City Police Force?
Around five, I believe, yes.
About five. And how many have been decertified in the past, what, five years, is it?
I think there's been four that have been decertified.
So, four out of five have been decertified?
No, no, we have five on the force right now.
Okay, so, so four in the last, how many years?
About the last five, six, seven years.
And what were the reasons for their decertifications?
Well, I've only been the mayor for a couple of months, and I'm still.
Okay, well, is there some?
Difficult for him to answer the question.
Okay, but I, is there anyone from Colorado City who can answer that?
I believe Mr. Darger could, if he would come down and join the podium.
Thank you Chairman Watson, Supervisors. There have been some decertifications of the Colorado City Police Officers. The last one, I think, was about seven years ago. So, there, to answer your question directly, there has not been any in the last five years, and so... And so, um, if this proposed legislation had a, a period that looked backwards for five years, then it would not, that would not be, it would not affect us. It'd only be going forward.
Right, so, but, but you had four who were decertified in, shall we say, ten years? Is, so that's out of five, a, a force of five, over a ten-year period, four have been.
Well, I think is what they do is they look at the total amount that's been on the force in that ten-year period, so let's say it was ten. You know, ten members. Because of course, some of the ones that are there now weren't there back at that time when those other ones were decertified. So, there, there wasn't just a force of, of five during the whole timeframe. If that answers your question.
Well, I had asked why they were decertified, but.
Okay, um, two of them were decertified where they did not answer some questions in a deposition. One of them was decertified because he was charged with a crime. Um, that was the only one, there was one that was decertified. Oh, two of them were decertified because of bigamy.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your statement.
Two of them were decertified because of bigamy, they were.
Bigamy, okay.
They were never charged with any crime, just administrative proceeding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Darger or Mayor Alred? Thank you, gentlemen.
Supervisor Watson, just, just a little bit of a, just to make sure that Mr. Darger's comment there was, is clarified, it, it's not like there were five officers and four were decertified all at once. It, I mean, you have a rolling process where one is decertified and then in a stretching of time, maybe another one is decertified, it's not like four out of the five officers were in one strike were, were decertified, just for clarification, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And for further adoration, I suppose, two were released for insubordination, one was charged and then two were charged with bigamy. I guess that's correct.
Is, is there someone here, I don't, I don't know if there's anyone here, is, is decertification, is that something that happens often? Is it a rare occurrence in any police department? Is there anyone who can answer that?
Mr. Ekstrom, can you speak to that item?
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, I really wouldn't know, but in the case of Colorado City, they were under kind of a microscope, so I think their department was probably viewed more critically than a lot of other departments around the state. And to their credit, at least there hasn't been anyone decertified in the last five years and, and I don't know whether that means that they've cleaned up their act, if you will, or whether it just, nobody's done anything about it, so. I can't tell you whether or not it's a common occurrence throughout the state, officers are from time to time decertified if they commit crimes, if they do things on the job that are inappropriate, things of that nature. Colorado City was just different than a lot, there was legislation, I think, focused on drawing attention to the problems they were having in the department at the time.
Thank you.
And I'd like to make a comment, but Colorado City is in my district, it's in District One and over these past years, those people have been decertified, there is a function of decertification and it has been used over the, over this period of time. My position on this House Bill is simply that if a person is guilty, charge that person, bring them in front of the court and go through their due process. I believe that this House Bill goes way past, way past any type of common sense when it comes down with dealing with a, a city. It singles this particular city out, they have been doing their job, they have been decertificating and my position is if someone is guilty, charge them. I don't believe that there's any need at this point to support a bill that would decertify the entire function of that force. That's my statement.
May I make a comment?
Mr. Moss.
Because maybe I'm.
Supervisor Moss, I'm sorry.
Mr. Sfines, Steve's good too. The, um, my, my understanding of the bill, and I did look at it briefly, is based upon what the officials from Colorado City have said. It wouldn't affect them currently because it's way outside the window. Um, so it's not, I think we're all clear, probably the motive, reading the papers, the motive was looking at Colorado City. Um, but it doesn't target them specifically because if they're being correct with us, then there's, it's not going to have any impact on them. And secondly, even if half the police force did get decertified, then they would come to the Board of Supervisors because it's not an automatic function that the county sheriff would take it over. If I read the bill, my understanding is correct and maybe I should ask Mr. Ekstrom this. If more than half are decertified, then the sheriff could bring the issue to the Board of Supervisors to look at and the Board of Supervisors just could say, yes, Sheriff, take over the law enforcement option, functions or no sheriff, we don't want to get into that business, let them fix, get their own house in order and we'll, we'll go our own way. The third thing, third thought that I had when I read it is, and I expressed this to the Colorado City officials when we met last Friday, was if half your police force in a five-year period is being hit by post, that cause a concern, there's a bit of, there's a, there's a, there's a culture there or at least a pattern, I won't call it a culture, I'll call it a pattern, which would tend to indicate there's a problem. Um, now, it's not quite fair, I don't think, for the smaller police forces because with a five-man police force, three of you guys get dinged in five years, then you're, you're here talking to us. And a larger police force, like to say Bullhead City where they have roughly eighty officers, it would take forty police officers, so it's less likely. But I think that's part of the hardship that all small police departments face in that, you know, they're trying to do a job in an area and they have fewer resources and are more of a burden. And anyways, those are my thoughts on it and I don't see a problem supporting this bill because it's not going to impact anyone. And personally speaking, I don't see it impacting anyone unless they, this old pattern rearises in the future, which I hope it doesn't.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Is that in the form of a motion?
Oh, no, no, I didn't know if discussion was done yet.
Supervisor Johnson?
Uh, thank you, and to, to go to Supervisor Moss's part, there's also another layer too because the Attorney General has to review the decertifications and then bring it to the sheriff who then brings to the board. So, especially on a small department like you're saying, if you have, you know, just somebody who comes in, you hire them on and for whatever reason they're a bad fit, it could be domestic violence, whatever else they had. The Attorney General is not going to hold that against a department, those things come out, I think when they see a, a pattern of abuse of the office is when it'll be brought up because there's always a chance that, you know, on a five-man department, three guys could have a bachelor party and do something that they shouldn't have done and, I mean, it takes a lot to get decertified, decertification is, is a long process and it, it is very, um, high crimes and misdemeanors, I guess, if you want, I mean, they just don't decertify somebody who gets thirty days off. Um, but I think that it, just like Supervisor Moss, that it doesn't affect that department now. Uh, I think the closest one might be court site, but any, any department should welcome the, uh, help from the Attorney General and the County Board of Supervisors, I believe.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Any further discussion?
None for me.
Chairman, entertain a motion.
Oh, I move that we, um, direct, that we, I don't know what the language you're looking for, but I'll go as that the Board of Supervisors of Mojave County, Arizona indicate to the state legislature that we support House Bill two-six-four-eight regarding Police Functions Revocation and Officer Misconduct Bill.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Supervisor Johnson, did you have anything additional?
No, no, sir.
I would like to make a couple comments on this. If there indeed is a pattern of abuse in this situation, certainly needs to be identified. But I, I guess I'm having a difficulty in singling out any small and particularly Colorado City. And I'm wondering about the constitutionality of, of bringing by this House Bill twenty-six forty-eight. I just, I feel uneasy about it, I feel that if indeed that an officer needs to be decertified, then he needs to go through the process. This could be a very costly situation for Mojave County. And Attorney Generals change, philosophies change, but the costs are going to remain the same. And that's my comment.
I have a comment. Chairman Watson? I would feel the same way if I felt like that this was just targeting Colorado City, but I don't see that in here anywhere. It says any town or city and so I, I'm thinking if an officer does not do their job and does not perform according to what their certification is, then probably they should be decertified. Not just because they're in Colorado City, but they may be in Topock or someplace, I, you know, whatever. I, I, so, I, that's my feeling on it.
Yes, please, would you like to? Please state your name and address for the.
My name is Herbert Schröder and I live at nineteen oh one East Danny Devine. Thank you for recognizing me, I'm sorry I didn't sign up earlier, but one of the points that I would like to make is if an officer is not doing their job and they commit a crime or there is a problem, there are checks and balances in place within all departments and you're turning over that to the State of Arizona, letting the government make the decision rather than, like if there's a problem at KPD, the chief is going to get involved. And where, it just seems like to me you're adding another level of government and laws for the sake of laws. If it's not going to impact anybody, then why have the law? Laws for the sake of laws do nothing but provide somewhere to put ink that you've bought. Uh, and, and that's my concern. Conduct of our police force needs to stay with our police departments because ultimately they're the ones that are on the front lines of fighting crime, they know what's going on. And when you take that out and you put it into the hands of the state, now your department's lost their voice. So, and who's to say that the state will make the right decisions? They're not there, they're removed, but that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I answer that, say something? Um, I just want to clarify that this bill, it, it goes, what it does is it gives it back to the county, the state is not going to be making that decision, the Board of Supervisors of the county. So, although I understand your general premise about less government, I understand that, I just wanted to clarify that, that it's not the state, it's the county would be making the decision.
Even so, the county is removed from, you're not in Colorado City, you're not, all of you don't, aren't in Havasu on a day-to-day basis. So, you're still removed from that geographic area that may be having that problem. That isn't to say that if it, it just seems like it's a law for the sake of laws, if it's, as Mr. Moss says, it's not going to impact anybody, why have it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Certainly, Supervisor Moss.
I view this House Bill as being very, um, it's basically playing shortstop. If a municipal government's police department has a problem, the county has the optional power, not the mandatory obligation, to step in and try to fix it if there are very specific severe numerous occurrences of that problem, not an isolated incident. And I wish we had something similar to this in place prior to the Lake Mojave Rancho's fire department's problems kicking into play. Um, because we were, we were paralyzed in, in that situation until actually the entire board resigned, that's the only time we could have done anything there, so, um, casting the county back into the role of being a shortstop, I don't think is the same as saying an additional layer of government where the county's interfering, we're saying that if there's been a breakdown, the county can step in. That's what the state legislature is saying and I, I kind of like the idea of redundancy in the law enforcement and even the fire department systems, let's have some redundancy so if one system fails, another can step up and correct for it.
Thank you, Supervisor Moss. Is that in the form of a motion?
Uh, yeah, I, um, I think we already, didn't I already move to approve?
Oh, we have a motion and a second, I'm sorry. Any further comment? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? I'll say nay. Four to one. Item number seventy-seven. Discussion possible action regarding the retention or removal of Mojave County Building Security Policies and Procedures at all county buildings, this is from January second, continued to February fourth. Uh, motion for discussion?
I move for discussion.
We have a motion? I'll second it for discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Supervisor Moss?
My understanding readings from the back, first off, even though it's carried forward exactly the way it, it reads here, I think every board meeting we've reiterated that this item and the related item seventy-eight only has to do with this county administration building. Um, the language of all county buildings keeps carrying forward each month, but that is not the intent of myself or I think the balance of the board based upon the prior commentary that's been made.
And I, I agree.
Yeah, but, um, based upon some of the backup data and materials, um, I believe that when it comes to this particular item, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ekstrom, the ASAP, have they requested an additional month, our insurance agent requested an additional month on item seventy-seven or seventy-eight? I think it was seventy-eight B they wanted the more, the, the additional month on, but I wasn't positive when I read their letters.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, may I, may I answer that for you?
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes, um, and yes, you are correct. ASAP more strongly is weighing in on the concept of allowing employees to carry guns. I requested that ASAP weigh in on the security station itself and I believe they view that as a county issue strictly and not a liability issue. They're more in tune and more responsible for ensuring that our employees are, are, are covered and, and not creating a liability.
So, when I read the backup materials, their concerns and the request for further review is directed to item seventy-eight B, but not seventy-seven or seventy-eight A.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, that's, that's in essence correct, but I, I believe there was some indication in both letters that William Hardy provided and Georgia Staton provided that showed some concern about any activities that the county may have in regards to our security. So, uh, it was my choice to go ahead and include those letters as backup for all, all three items.
I think that answered my question, that we need, is there, do you want a motion or are we still discussing?
If you, if you'd care to make a motion, go ahead.
Uh, I move that effective April first, that we approve the removal of the security screening station and reduce the number of contract security guards to two per business day with an implementation date of April first, two thousand and thirteen and authorize the sheriff to provide any additional security measures he deems necessary at the administration building, this building, to protect our citizens and employees at no additional cost to the county.
Can I say something?
Pardon me?
Can I say something?
Uh, well, if you'd like to second the motion.
I'll second, but I want to say something.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
Okay, this, I just, I just want to clarify something because I, I, we kind of screwed it all over it, that how, how I understand it, if we do take out the metal detection machine, that the, the sheriff has a plan. I, I just want that known, that the sheriff has a plan to, that he believes will make up for that and even actually provide more security. I, I don't think that that was made clear enough.
And I would concur with Supervisor Angus's statement.
I've got a couple of questions I want to make positively sure, because this item would dramatically increase our liability, I feel. And, and I wasn't in favor of all the, the security in the first place, and I tried by bringing the item to the agenda about eighteen months ago and didn't get a second. My concern was, in adding the additional security, we'd never be in a situation where we could remove it without being, entertaining a great deal of liability. And my question is, and the intent of your motion is to remove the magnetometer machine, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Would there still be a policy to not have weapons in the building?
Well, that, I believe that's item seventy-eight.
Okay.
That's, that's item seventy-eight about weapons being in the building. I guess hypothetically thinking about it, if seventy-seven passes but seventy-eight fails, we'd have a system much like with Lake Havasu City Hall, where people have a sign out front and it says, "No weapons allowed," and they're supposed to get a key and they check their weapon in the box and they go about their business.
Okay.
But they're not, they're not subjected to a magnetrometer coming in.
Okay. That clarified one item for me. Thank you. And I guess at that point, then, that answers that question for me. Thank you. I have no further questions.
I kind of do. If...
Supervisor Angus.
Since, since the, the machine was put in, it was not put in as a result of an incident. It was just put in. So how I understand it is if it's taken out, there should be no added liability. The example, the analogy that I had been given by a lawyer was that if you have a rail, like a stair rail, and nothing's ever happened, there's been no incidents, but you've put in more rails just to make it look good or to secure it even firmly, then you decide you don't like it, you take the rails out, and then someone has an accident, you don't have more liability because at one time you had these extra supports. Is that correct? And so I, I, I've been under the impression that we would have no further liability. Is, is that, is that a correct assumption?
Mr. Hendrick.
Mr. Chairman Supervisor, Supervisor Angus, I'd like to try to clarify my understanding of why the security station was implemented in this building. I believe generally, security measures are implemented because of a risk assessment. And I believe the security measures in this building were implemented because of certain threats that were being received by, by, I know of the county manager receiving some threats, threats and possibly by other supervisors. And also, there was the incident that a weapon was, a pitchfork was brought into this facility, so administration made the determination to install the security measures. Regarding liability, one of the things that our security person, Bob Prince, is recommending is, and I believe rightfully so, any action, there should be a threat assessment done, either in-house or contracted out, and that threat, threat assessment should be utilized to identify what security measures are actually needed at a facility irregardless of costs or, or other reasons. And I, I hope that answered your question. I can't answer the liability part. It's, it's something that a professional would have to put together for us, or in-house staff would have to put together for us.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson?
I guess that brings Supervisor Angus up a good, good point. And so you're telling me that staff was given this back in January, and we still don't have a letter from an attorney saying what our liability issues are?
I think the only letters we've seen, we've seen on this is from ASAP, Mr. William Hardy, and his concerns are more, I believe, about the firearms in the building by the employees. Have you been and received those two letters?
Yes, I, I think I've seen those, but I, I think Supervisor Angus brings up a, a good point, the, the liability issue, because she's saying that some attorney told her that, you know, the opinion he gave, but we know attorneys' opinions, you need to get them in writing if you're going to have something. So I would think that county staff would furnish us with something saying, hey, if you do this, there's no problem. If you do this, there's extra security or, or less than your liability. That'd be what we go on, but I'm just curious why we don't have a letter from at least our attorney or whoever provides insurance saying, hey, we, we have a lot of, a lot of security or our policy's going to be higher now.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. I don't suffer from being an attorney, but I'd like to point out the, the possibility if, if the magnetometer was to be removed, and some weapons came in through that front door, and someone were to be hurt or even killed, and this went to, to court. I guess the first question that, that prosecutor would, would say is why in the world would the county remove a security device in this day and age in which there are incidents throughout the United States? And the only answer to that question would be, well, we took it out, and the answer is more guns came in. So we're at a point, I believe, and this is, this is my own personal feeling, by removing the magnetometer and removing our policies now, it puts us in a situation in which our liability is not only there, but is also increased by the fact that we had security and then it was taken out. So that's the other side of the lawyer issue. I don't know of any two lawyers that have ever agreed on anything, so. Mr. Ekstrom.
Mr. Chairman, I, I am suffering from being a lawyer, I suppose. Mr. Taylor from our office has a written opinion that was attached, I think to Georgia Staton's letter, basically concurring with what he felt was ASAP's position, that it would not be wise to remove current security, given liability problems. And I didn't know whether the board had access to that or not.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly. Supervisor Moss.
Looking at the seal of the county, this county was formed in eighteen sixty-four. That security apparatus did not exist until two thousand ten, and it came into place because a gentleman brought a pitchfork into this, into this room, I assume. My understanding is he never pointed that pitchfork at everyone, at anyone, and later a judge ruled that he was just exercising his First Amendment right. It was a prop. That was, it was a prop to show that he was an old-school farmer protesting an out-of-control government. So because of that, we now have a security apparatus. We have people writing letters saying, if we remove it, you're going to have increased liability and the world will all come to an end. I think that logic is flawed, that this is not a high-profile, high-intense emotional situation such as a courthouse, which was Ms. Staton's example, in which no one's arguing that we remove security from the courthouse. It's my understanding that many of the counties of comparable size, also insured by ASAP, have no such security apparatus in front of their county administration buildings. And so it occurs to me that we are allowing ourselves to be paralyzed because of make-believe figures based upon non-incidents, because, I don't know why. I really don't why. When you have a threat assessment, let's have a real threat. If Mervin Freed had come charging down those steps, pitchfork in hand, and trying to bayonet the board, I'd be worried. But that hasn't happened. I mean...
I assure you that Mr. Freed coming down the stairs with his pitchfork would not get all the way past here.
I'm sure he wouldn't. And which is another thing, is there's lots of security in this room right now. I mean, the fact that we need...
Supervisor Johnson, did you have something you wanted to add?
Oh, I, I could add to Supervisor Moss's question. I, I think the pitchfork incident was just very blown out. One, one, one example. We've always allowed, since I've been in, weapons to be carried in the boardroom, but most people would carry them concealed, which nobody ever had a problem with. It got bad towards the last few years or so, maybe a little longer than that, where people decided to start carrying their weapons on the outside, showing their right to carry a weapon. It got to be where there was numerous weapons in the room strapped down like gunslingers. This is not the way to conduct business. They were used more as an intimidation method. At least that's the way people were accepting it. Employees were getting pretty scared when you tried to bring businesses in and they see that sort of a demonstration in a boardroom, especially when people were getting, coming in front of the board and voicing their displeasure at some item we were on while they had a gun strapped down on their leg. It, it didn't give people a real good feeling of self-confidence, I guess. So it wasn't only just the pitchforks.
Right. And I'd, I'd like to bring forth this other issue too. On February sixteenth, two thousand and ten, at a board meeting there, there were forty-two individuals that came in that day, checked in their guns, and there happened to be forty-three guns instead of forty-two. One gentleman forgot that he had an extra gun. So there is more to this issue than just that, so.
But my, my comment is, so. I mean, he had a gun, he didn't point it at anyone. I mean, frankly, the cities, all three of our cities don't have magnetrometers before you go into their boardrooms, and they've never had a single incident. As I said previously, up until two thousand and ten, where things got heated between personalities, we'd never had an incident. And I would point out for those who want to say in today's day and age, we need to have more security. And well, actuality, in the last decade, gun crime has been dropping significantly. We get, maybe get more news reports, but the firearm murders are down to like eight, say, eight thousand in the nation, where at one point there were sixteen thousand. I mean, crime is going down. This makes no logical sense.
May I comment?
Certainly. Supervisor Bretherton.
We're not talking about doing away with security altogether. We're just talking about changing the way we do secure our building, and we want to make it a little friendlier, a little warmer, maybe even a little safer and not so antagonistic. I hate that machine out there. That's just my personal opinion. But I do want our people to be safe, and I want our security to be in place. So I, well, I, I just would like to see it change.
Okay. We have two, two people that would like to speak to the issue. First person would be Herbert Schroeder.
Thank you to the Board of Supervisors. My name is Herbert Schroeder, and I live at nineteen oh one East Danny Devine. Personally, I hate that machine as well. I usually set it off, and for some reason I didn't today. I was like overjoyed. I find that it's, it's kind of a nuisance and not needed, but yet you can't really take it out until you've resolved number seventy-eight. Because if you don't have it, and you have one security officer, then you do have a little liability. But if everyone knew because of a sign outside that weapons are carried in this building, do you really think somebody's going to come in and try to attack when they know that they probably won't make it three feet before they're shot? I mean, it comes down to the point of if, if you know everybody in town is armed, would you go in and do a home invasion? You know, personally, I think get rid of it, sell it, take the money and put it towards more Sheriff's Department personnel, so you can have armed security guards if needed on a high-traffic basis, but you kind of need to address number seventy-eight first. And you do have employees that are by themselves dealing with large amounts of money, and I'm talking about your park service. It would take forty-five minutes to get an officer up to the Wild Pie Mountains if something happened. And the park ranger is out doing park ranger duties and patrolling the area, and you've got one person in that office. And that person should be armed. You know, the same with Davis Camp. If you've got two or three people in that office, that's all they have. And how long will it take a person to get there to help them? So if you have a policy in place that if you've passed your concealed carry weapons permit class, then you're obviously trained on how to use your weapon and when not to use your weapon, and your first event is always nine-one-one, then I think that would be the only security you really need, with all the sides having to show force at the door just to keep down people that are a little not stable. Just my humble opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Canelus?
I live at forty-four oh two Oldman Road, Central Sacramento Valley. I'm confused. Are we talking about item seventy-seven or seventy-eight? Or a combination thereof?
Item seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven. We're just talking about the security apparatus out front done?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I would like it removed. I think it's unnecessary for a lot of reasons. You've got the Sheriff's Department right across the street, basically. This building is secure. You don't have to have an X-ray machine and, and a magnetometer or whatever it is, and everybody's got emptied their pockets and roll up their pants legs and all this stuff just to come in this building. The citizens of Mojave County are not that dangerous, I don't think. So please remove it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canelus. Any further discussion?
Mr. Watson, I didn't realize, I signed up for the next one, but may I?
Yes, Ms. Ben-Susan, please come down.
That'll be all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I really appreciate it, and I apologize.
Not a problem. We're...
Denise Ben-Su... Thank you very much. Denise Ben-Susan, forty-eight eleven East Kaai Bill, Kingman, Arizona. I'm in Gary Watson's district. I'm probably the last person in the world that you would think would come up here and tell you to leave that machine there. But I think that we are grossly underestimating gun violence in America, and we already have the security there. It, it's, it's not a complicated thing. You throw your purse up there, you're at... You know, I pack a weapon twenty-four seven. I've had to unload my weapon and leave my driver's license. It doesn't take very long. It's a simple process. There's been nine... I take that back, let me make sure I have this right. There has been a mass shooting once a month since two thousand and nine in America. Now, we've got, I, I don't care if, you know, this is a volatile, volatile area. We have such hatred in this community, and if, and if you all can't see it, I'm sorry. You really need to go onto some of the social media sites and see some of the threats that are made to people that don't believe the same as someone else does. I, I think that you taking that machine out, quite frankly, and, and I hated the idea. I agreed with Gary in the beginning with, let's not do it to begin with, but it's there. And I think that in, in these days, look at Sandy Hook, I mean, children are being slaughtered. We have mass murders. You know, this is important. We already have it here. I, I think it's important not to underestimate the fact that, that violence can happen in our community right in these rooms. Because I'll tell you what, you've been on the political scene, and I have for twenty years here. Let me tell you something. There's some volatile stuff going on in here, and a lot of hatred, and a lot of people that hate are packing weapons, and they'll kill you because you don't believe the same that they did. So, you know, let's not underestimate it, please. And thank you. I apologize for not signing up. Thank you very much.
Certainly, Ms. Ben-Susan. Thank you. I'm sorry, please.
I live at two-two-two five South Dome Road, Golden Valley. I'm in Joy, Bretherton's area. And I actually wasn't going to speak on this until I heard a couple of speakers say they. Do you honestly believe that that magnetometer out there is going to keep somebody?
Do you honestly believe that that magnetometer out there is going to keep somebody who, if they want to do destruction in this county building, from doing it? All they have to do is have somebody walk in through the front, go through the magnetometer, walk over to that exit door, open it up, and let a horde load of people with weapons come in and start shooting. Or what they could do theoretically, because of nice glass out there in front, is drive their vehicle through that window, jump out and start taking out all the security guards. That security apparatus out there is not going to help it. Because the vast majority of the people come in here are law-abiding citizens, not the ones that are going to take out the employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meriwether.
Can I say something?
Yes. Supervisor Angus.
I agree with Mr. Meriwether. I believe that machines like that, magnet, what's a magnetometer, X-ray machine, is a false sense of security. I had to unfortunately take out a restraining order, and as much as that protects me, the policeman took me aside, and he said, if he wants to get you, he'll get you. And as much as I didn't want to hear it, it's the truth. You know, so it just comes down to the philosophy. What kind of people do we want to be? You know, do we want to have that false sense of security, the government taking care of us? Or are we going to be, are we going to take care of ourselves and do what we have to do to take care of ourselves? And I'll always, I'll always vote for the latter. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor.
That's correct.
Anyone else wishing to discuss this item? Yes, I see a hand in the back.
Joe Longoria, fifteen fifty John L. Joy, Brotherton's, my supervisor. I just want to kind of state some obvious for Supervisor Moss and maybe the rest of you. I've heard a lot, said a lot that guns don't kill people, but people with guns do kill people. I, for one, do feel a sense of security, knowing that there's somebody, there's another layer of security with the X-ray machine out there to see if I have, anybody has a weapon in here. There hasn't been, to my knowledge, an incident of anybody bringing a weapon in here since it's been out there. And what price do we have to pay? Does somebody actually have to get maimed or died to justify having one out there when it seems to be working? So I would urge you to, you know, the cost of human life is pretty, is more than what we're paying to have that machine out there. So I encourage you to keep it out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longoria.
This will be always an ongoing problem. My name's Louis Tranca. I live at five-three-seven-three Highway sixty-eight, Golden Valley. Second Amendment says we have a right to bear arms. Well, let me ask you a question. If I can't carry my weapon, and the sheriff's busy with the guys coming through the window, and one guy gets down here and starts shooting you, and I stop him, you don't let me have my weapon, I can't stop him. Yes, there's crazies that shoot up schools. I won't argue that. But how did they get that weapon? From the mother? Then the mother's just as crazy as the kid is. We secure our weapons, the sheriff's got to have a strap on his holster, I have to have a strap on my holster, and I do have a right to carry in the state of Arizona. And I would like to keep that right to protect me, to protect anybody else who gets in harm's way due to the bad, crazy person who may not like you, supervisor. I don't know. I hope nobody ever stops liking you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tranca. Yes, we have an arm up at the back.
Good morning, Supervisors. Chairman Watson, I didn't plan to speak, but after hearing everybody speak, I just can't keep quiet too much longer.
Please state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Constable Gene Bishop, five-twenty-four West Beale Street, Kingman, Arizona. I wanted to speak in support of item seventy-seven. I agree with Ms. Angus. The magnetometer is a false sense of security. If the sheriff is willing to put even one deputy sheriff over here for security, I believe that takes the place of at least ten security officers because of their background and their training and their sense of presence. I am in support of removing the magnetometer. I would suggest putting a notice, weapons not allowed in the board meetings, and having lockers where folks can voluntarily lock up their weapons. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Anyone wishing else to speak? There being none, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
And I also, no. Three to two. Motion carried. Item seventy-eight, discussion possible action allowing weapons in or on county facilities and vehicles by citizens and county employees. This would be item A. Removal of weapons prohibitions for citizens. Motion for discussion?
I move for discussion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, discuss.
Why do I always have to go first?
You're a lucky guy.
My position on item seventy-eight is that, I think I had some language. Seventy-eight A is what's being currently discussed, is that as long as this is a lawful weapon, which means not a prohibited weapon, and as long as it's in a holster or in a purse or a scabbard or whatnot, that we should allow citizenry to exercise their right to carry a weapon into this public building. It's not a courthouse. It's very secure. I mean, the vast bulk of the employees in this building, it'd be very difficult to get to anyway. And I believe that we should approve that. Just as an aside, on seventy-eight B, I think that probably based upon our insurance carrier's recommendation, should be tabled a month or two, but that's just me. That's my position on seventy-eight. My thoughts on seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight A?
Seventy-eight A. I believe that we should allow weapons in the building, I shouldn't say it that way. We should not prohibit our citizens from carrying weapons into this building if they choose to in order to protect their own health and safety.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Unless there's further discussion, I'll go ahead.
Further discussion or?
I want to remind everyone that before 2010, this was what was in place. And it was never an issue. And it was all brought on because a man with a pitchfork as a prop came in. So it's unfortunate, I believe, that we have to have this discussion with what's going on, but it is what it is. And so I, I guess I, are you going to make a motion or?
I just would like to add, I believe that the threat came prior to the pitchfork.
If I may for one moment. I think actually this is a more restrictive regime than was in existence prior to 2010. State law doesn't require, if I remember correctly, a weapon being in a holster if you carry it. I can walk down with a rifle or shotgun up and down Main Street if I want to. In fact, I think a person's done that recently. So if you bring a weapon into this building, it has to be holstered or scabbarded, and we're actually imposing another layer of protection. Because if it's in your hand, you're a threat. If it's in a holster, you're not. And whether Hildy or I makes them, I have the language up if you want me to say the words.
Well, can I say one more thing? You know, we're also at this building, how many county buildings are there in Mojave County? Where I work, down in Bullhead City, they have an annexed building for the treasurer. There's money there. You know, there without any protection. People come in with guns all the time, there's money. You know, so if we're going to go and if we're going to say like, why is this building so special? You know, I just have to say that. Because some of the employees in other areas have talked to me about it. And, but there's never been a problem. You know, and I'm not saying there's never going to be. But again, you know, is it?
I'll make a motion that effective April first, 2013, all lawful weapons brought into the administration building located at seven-hundred Beale Street, Kingman, Arizona, shall be and will remain holstered, in a scabbard, or otherwise placed in a container such as, but not limited to, a purse or a fanny pack. All unlawful weapons are prohibited. With the adoption of this policy, Administrative Procedure three-six, adopted March one, 2010, will be and hereby is rescinded. I hope I said that correctly.
We have a motion?
That's my motion, yes.
Thank you.
I take up the motion.
We have a motion and a second. We have two people that would like to speak to that item. Would any of the board care to speak first?
No, I just reiterate that this is to seventy-eight A at the present time.
Right. This is seventy-eight A. I have Denise Ben-Susan signed up for seventy-eight, and Jim Canelus signed up for seventy-eight.
Denise Ben-Susan, forty-eight eleven East Ka'ebil, Kingman, Arizona. I'm in Gary's district. I've sort of taken the other side of this coin on purpose because I noticed no one else did. So I did a lot of research, and one of the big things I wanted to mention to you as a county is that, first of all, you know, gun laws are not unconstitutional. And the Supreme Court basically has, their basic premise is guarantee, all that it does is guarantees an individual right to possess a firearm in the home for self-defense. And so according, according to what the research I've done, and this is District of Columbia versus Heller, and they use that on a lot, to disrupt a lot of lower court cases, is that I don't think we as a county need to worry about being unconstitutional by having some limits on carrying weapons in any building. I don't like the idea either, actually. I don't like unloading my gun. I think it's dangerous to have to take it out and, and, you know, put it away. I'm always, always worried someone was going to get hurt me taking the gun out. You know, just even though I know how to handle a weapon. But I still, I have to take the stance, though, please consider that this is a very volatile area where the county seat, we deal with a lot of volatile issues, and no guns in this area, I just think are, is appropriate. And, and I don't think we'd be in violation of any constitutional rights by doing so. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ben-Susan.
My name's Jim Canelus. I live at forty-four oh two Oldman Highway. I never brought a gun into this building until you came and said, can't bring guns in here anymore. Then I brought a gun. And I have every time I've come in this building since you've said, no, Jim, you cannot do that anymore. Because I feel I have the right to, if I choose to. But prior to that, I didn't choose to. Today I do, though. Also, I think you need to resend three-point-one, or three-dash-one, because it goes to dealing with weapons. I've said it before, I would hope you people will eliminate Administrative Policy three-dash-one for many reasons. And the one today I'm talking for is because it does say no weapons allowed in the administration building. So resend this one, too. Thank you.
Mr. Canelus?
Thank you, Chairman and Board Members. Neil Hickerson, eight-five-eight-two, Hope Road, Golden Valley. Just a little thing, I'll read for you here. As a retired law enforcement officer, I want to express my approval for the removal of any county gun prohibition. I've always believed in a person's right to protect themselves because as much as I wanted to be everywhere and prevent crimes and protect the innocent, when I was a law enforcement officer, I knew this was unrealistic. Unfortunately, law officers are reactive, not proactive. We deal with situations or crimes after they have occurred. I've always loved when I was able to foil a criminal before he could complete a crime, and that's a very unusual occurrence to happen. We usually know about a crime when we are dispatched to a location where the crime occurred. And the type of an incident such as a man with a gun call, or an assault call, or a rape call, or any other violent, life-threatening type call, I myself would rather arrive at the scene, and I know my other brother officers would too, and have to calm down a shaken-up victim because they shot their attacker dead. Instead of throwing a sheet over the dead victim on the floor who was unable to protect themselves, talk to possible witnesses, gather information, so we can start a suspect search. All the while, this takes time, and that same suspect is still out there at large with the ability to kill or harm others. You know, until he's stopped by law enforcement officers. Again, I would rather be waiting for the coroner to pick up a deceased suspect instead of a deceased victim. We live in a great state with an excellent gun laws that support the citizens. The state itself has current legislation, HB two-twenty-five-fifty-four, which would further enhance the citizens' rights to protect themselves, and this bill is up for final vote. The bill itself has passed, a due-pass recommendation of a five-to-two vote. The bill would allow law-abiding citizens to carry concealed handgun for self-defense in any public buildings that lack adequate security. Well, we just voted to take this out, which I agree with Hildy, it's a false sense of security anyway. I don't like putting my life in the hands of somebody else. I would rather protect myself. Not all county buildings are gun-free zones either. Citizens can enter them with their guns, but they are making a face-to-face contact with county employees that permit, that per merit rules are not allowed to carry a firearm at work. So in essence, all county buildings are gun-free zone for employees only, leaving them defenseless. It's interesting, Ms. Schröder brought up the county parks. My wife is the clerk at the county park ranger station on Malapay Mountain. She's a little five-foot-six, hundred-and-ten-pound female. I've trained her thoroughly on how to handle weapons. I am a range master. She has her CCW. But yet, because of county merit rules, she's up there handling sometimes up to two, three thousand dollars in a day and unable to protect herself, and she has nothing of any kind of a barrier between her and the public. Again, I fully support every pill of the county gun prohibition. It should be removed countywide from all buildings and facilities, not just the administration building. I don't feel, and I don't imagine, any other county employee would feel working at admin is more important or the people at admin are more important. So subsequently, remove the prohibition for all county employees from full-time, sorry, I'm going over a little bit, to include all full-time, clear down the volunteer employees that want to carry in their place, work if they so desire. Not leaving it in their vehicle in the parking lot as this is worthless if they need it. Make this repeal active immediately, effective today. This eliminates any liability on the county if someone was in a situation of needing to defend themselves and were unable to because the new rule had not reached its effective date. Allow employees to protect themselves, to have the same right as any civilian coming off the street. Don't wait until the governor's visit for this to go into effect. There's no reason for any delay. Enacting this today will give no effect on her visit at all. She will have plenty of protection of her own, as well as local law enforcement personnel assigned to her while she is there. It's really unfortunate that we-
Mr. Hickerson, you're kind of rambling here.
Okay, this is my last sentence, sir. It's unfortunate that we're even discussing this matter, is everyone has a right to protect themselves. We currently live in a crazy and uncertain time, and I feel that more than ever, people need to exercise a right for self-protection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickerson.
Any questions for me?
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those?
I don't know what we're voting on.
Opposed?
I don't understand. What are we voting on?
Do you want me to restate the motion, Gary?
If you'll please restate the motion.
I move that effective April one, 2013, all lawful weapons brought into the administration building located at seven-hundred Beale Street, Kingman, Arizona, shall be and will remain holstered, in a scabbard, or otherwise placed in a container such as, but not limited to, a purse or fanny pack. All unlawful weapons are prohibited. With the adoption of this policy, Administrative Procedure three-dash-six, adopted March one, 2010, will be and hereby is rescinded.
Okay. Now, this is just for citizens.
Yes, seventy, this is only to seventy-eight A.
Seventy-eight A. Removal of weapons prohibited for citizens. We have a motion, and we've had a second. This was just a reaffirmation of that. And I would suggest that we go with the voice count. Supervisor Moss?
Aye.
Supervisor Brotherton?
Aye.
Supervisor Angus?
Aye.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Watson, also a no. Thank you. Supervisor Watson, also a no. Thank you. Item seventy-eight, B. Removal of weapons prohibition for staff and employees. I will also recognize the three people that have signed up for seventy-eight and spoke to seventy-eight A. Motion for discussion?
I move for discussion.
I second the motion.
Motion is second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Let's discuss.
This is based upon ASAP, I believe it's primarily ASAP, which has concerns regarding insurance issues. They're still exploring workers' compensation issues and things like that, that need to be resolved. I will echo one of Supervisor Johnson's earlier comments, that this is our third meeting, and they've had tons of time in order to finish their research, but it's not done yet, done yet. But until that is completed, I believe that we should be considering tabling seventy-eight B until next month's meeting. But let ASAP know that nothing else past that. That's their drop-dead date. That'd be my, that's not a motion, that's my thoughts. I just wanted to get my thoughts out and let everyone else get their.
Mr. Chairman? May I interrupt? And I apologize to the board for me not having information on this particular issue, but it's my understanding that one of the requests for ASAP for so much additional time is to allow the convening of the board of trustees. And that doesn't happen periodically. I'm sorry, that doesn't happen monthly, so that's why they're asking for the three-month extension to allow the normal convene, meeting of the trustees, so that they can hear this issue.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Are they asking for three months past this date, or are they asking for three months from when we first brought this up, on January 2nd?
We received a letter from William Hardy at the end of February, so I'm assuming it would be three months from his letter.
So, we're talking May?
Put it out to, yes, sir.
Yeah, I believe you would be talking about May.
I have a question.
Supervisor Johnson?
As the county manager, what difference is between B and A then? What's the three-month thing? 'Cause I've been to Phoenix, you're not allowed to bring in guns. I've been to Yuma, where I had to go to the magnetometer. Is it just for employees, or is it for everybody?
Mr. Chairman, if I understood Supervisor Johnson's question?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I understood Supervisor Johnson correctly, I couldn't hear him very well, but this is, this particular item is for employees, not for the citizens. That was the previous item.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yeah, it seems like it's a fifty-fifty there. I would think that we'd have an opinion from them on both ways, and writing from our insurance pool before we did anything, but that's just my opinion.
Can I say something? You know, I kind of agree with Supervisor Johnson. These two are tied. You know, we're passing one, but we're still hanging on the other. It seems that they should kind of go hand-in-hand, and get a total, you know, opinion, once and for all. Maybe, I don't know, we just did it. But I'm just uneasy, not having a legal, a firm legal opinion from our insurer.
And, Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding, the distinction is, the county insurance pool insurers employees, you know, the issue regarding citizens and magnetometer and security, William Hardy wasn't inclined to weigh in on. He said that's, that's further than he wants to go. And that that would be a county decision and a county issue.
Right. So, I'm saying that we'd want a, Supervisor Moss, that's what you're saying, too? You want a firm legal opinion?
Well, I know what my personal opinion is, which I'm willing to vote on in a drop of a hat. On the other hand, for, I'm, I'm not, I'm announcing I'm not opposed for those who really want to look at, from an employee perspective, giving them some additional time. So, I threw that out there for discussion's sake. I mean, my personal opinion is, I'm gonna vote for approved seventy-eight B, and I really don't care what the insurance carrier has to say about it. On the other hand, other supervisors may have a different opinion. And if that's, since it involves county finances, I'm more willing to be patient on that particular point.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Yes, I have a question. If we're going to allow the public to carry weapons in, then I think that the employees should be able to have a weapon also. I mean, who is gonna defend me? If I have to defend myself, I want to have, I want to have a weapon. Okay?
Don't worry, I'm a bigger target.
Yeah, but you're not a mile. She's probably a quicker shot. Okay.
We have three people that would like to speak to this issue. Would you like to hear from them?
It's up to you.
Denise Ben-Suson, for seventy-eight B.
No, thank you. I think I've said about all that I'm gonna say.
All right, thank you. Jim Canelis, seventy-eight B. Thank you. Neil Hickerson, seventy-eight B.
Neil Hickerson, five-eight-two Hope Road, Golden Valley. And I'll keep this one short, since I did the last one. Basically, that you guys keep throwing around the liability term and everything else. What's the liability on the county of a county employee, now that we passed the other resolution, has something happened to them? Okay? What's gonna be the liability in the county situation when that employee can't protect themselves? That's all I have to say on that.
Thank you, Mr. Hickerson. Gene?
Gene Hepler, the acting risk manager, and also the manager OMB. The question is, in dealing with the ASAP, and why they've asked for the period of time to review this, is if you make a decision, the trustees can decide if they're gonna cover us in insurance or not. So, if you move forward with this, and decide to allow employees to carry guns, the trust has to make a decision if they're gonna cover us with insurance or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hepler. I believe that clarifies the issue somewhat clearer. And we've all been receipt of the letter from Bill Hardy, from the Arizona County Insurance Pool. I believe that there is a difference between A and B, and those were outlined in this letter from Mr. Hardy. I believe it would be a very good idea to, to at least table this item until the insurance risk pool and trustees can meet on this issue.
May I ask one question of staff, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Ekstrom. I believe another distinguishing factor, other than, and I'm not trying to make the opposition's case for, not opposition's, that's the wrong term, the other side of the thing for a tabling. But it's my understanding that the employees in Mojave County, at least for the last thirty years, haven't had a right to carry a weapon at work. Is that correct?
It's in our merit rules. I'm Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moss.
So, it's been, so as long as the merit rules have been affect that right, which has been decades, they haven't, so what we did with A was we reversed a two-year ago change. And what we're considering with B is reversing a many decades reverse change. I say that not to support tabling, or support voting no on B. I say that in order to show that there's, both sides of this equation at the board aren't, we're not trying to be hypocrites here. We're doing, we're trying to give a due thought, and work our way through here, and try to keep things on a, on both a political, on a scale which recognizes political liberty and personal freedom and self-defense, while at the same time, doesn't unduly upset the status quo.
And being that the first part of this, we put a time of April 1st, and we meet on April 1st.
I believe ASAP will just say they need till May, based upon what Mr. Hendricks just said, because they meet sometime, I guess, during April, or something like that.
It'd be my suggestion, then, to at least table this item until after the trustees have met.
Do we know when that's gonna be?
I have, I don't have that information today. But I would certainly hate for Mojave County to find itself in a situation in which it's not being insured. And I think inaction today, by approving this, would put us at a risk situation in which we could possibly be uncovered. Being uncovered and putting our taxpayers at great risk, I think is shortsighted. So, it'd be my motion to table this item, seventy-eight B, until after the trustees have had an opportunity to meet and discuss our projected removal of weapons prohibitions for staff and employees, until after they have, the trustees have met.
I'll second that motion. I have a question for staff, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. We have a motion and a second.
When will we know when the trustees are meeting?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss. The reason for the, I was informed, the reason for the extended time is, the trustees actually meet March 14th. Then they would hear the item, and they would refer it to legal, their legal staff to review. And then they would have to rehear that item, and I, I'm not sure when that second date would be. But indication is that they should have some, that would be in some decision on it, sometime in May.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Mr. Ekstrom, did you have something to add?
No, Mr. Chairman, I didn't.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay, we have one no. Motion carried for the tabling of this item until after the trustees have met and give us that recommendation. Question for the clerk, do you have, is that a clear understanding? Okay. Item seventy-nine, discussion possible action. Approve the Kingman Youth Coalition beating up teens, tobacco, to hold their annual Kick Butt Day event at Mojave County building. This item is Supervisor Joey Brotherton's item.
Yes. I think that most of us have met the young people. They came up and gave their little presentation before our meeting. And I was very impressed with them. I, they came to my office, and they, they wanted to know if I would support them, the coalition, to, you know, kind of stamp out the smoking, and encourage all youth, and everybody, to quit smoking, or not start smoking. And I think this is a very worthy cause. I think that we've realized more and more how many health problems and issues this has caused. And I feel like this is a county function. You know, the county has built a brand-new building across over here to house a lot of the young people who don't have positive goals in mind, and have not obeyed the law and some of the rules. So, if we can participate in the discipline of those, then we need to also participate in encouraging our youth to do these things that are very positive. And I think for them to use our lobby there for the promotion of this, for a couple of hours on March 20th, I believe, I think is very commendable for the county to do in support of them.
Thank you, Supervisor Brotherton. Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes. I make a motion that we allow them to use our lobby on March 20th, I believe, from eight, eleven-thirty to one-thirty.
And I'll second your motion. Discussion?
I think it's a great program.
There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
No.
Ha-ha. You're still awake.
I'm still here.
Item number eighty, discussion possible action. Accept Wesley Hassel's resignation from the Transportation Commission, effective March 4th, 2013.
Motion to approve.
We have motion, and I'll second the motion. Questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item number eighty-two, under Steve Moss, Supervisor District Five. Discussion possible action. Approve the appointment of Georgia Carmen to the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Library District, representing District Five. Term to expire March 3, 2015.
I move that we appoint Georgia Carmen to the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Library District, representing District Five. Term to expire March 3, 2015.
And I'll second the motion. Questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Buster.
All right. Thank you, guys.
And ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming to our meeting today.